Minutes, a long minute. Yeah, minutes, a long minute.
I know, as soon as I sit down, it'll change.
It will.
See?
Okay, so the clock is recite the pledge to the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can have a call, please.
Poland here. Hostetter.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Khan.
Here.
Hafi.
Here.
Shoemaker. Oh, Shoemaker. I forgot you're up there today.
Here. They have a motion to dismiss the mayor tonight.
So who?
Second.
Poland.
Hi.
Vaughn.
Hi.
Hostetter.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye. Do we have any visitors that would like to address the council tonight?
The ones that know me on Kyle Yoder, I'm the fire chief down here, and as you know, you probably got your letters in the mail. We have a four mil continuous levy on ballot in November. We have found that we have a problem, as you read on your letter. There's two things that this levy will... We are using this levy for, number one, is for staffing. We have the same problems everybody else. Back in 2015, we asked for a levy, and at that time, we were able to rely on part-time personnel. As everybody knows, volunteers pretty much has left us and has been ten, twelve, fifteen years ago. Nobody volunteers anymore. Part-time is pretty much the same way right now. When we did that levy in 2015, we had on there that there will be four personnel at this station every day. If we have four people there, it's a good day. We're usually the three, or there's many days that there's only two at the station. With that being said, we want to hire, use this money to hire more full-time personnel. Right now, we're thinking six at minimum. If we have money, we'll hire more. But the thing that we want to do is have four personnel here at this station all the time. We have a station down at Lake Buckhorn. Back when that station was built in 2000, we had eight to ten guys that lived down there. We're down to two or so, and those two are retired. So, right now, Mechanic Township is our furthest point in our jurisdiction. From this station, our furthest point, we can have a response time of twenty-five minutes. If we can staff that station down there, it'll be a slow process. It'll probably be the same way as we started with this station, staffing this station. We have daytime station, or daytime staffing. So, it'd be a slow process, but we want to try to staff that station down there. We have the equipment down there. Those people pay taxes too, and a twenty-five minute response time is way too long. Especially if you're having a heart attack, a stroke, or something like that, because time is muscle. The quicker you can get to a neurological center back in general, or to a cath lab at Alton, the better off you're gonna be. The faster we can get there to start the process of giving you the drugs, the better off that patient's gonna be. Trauma's the same way. We've had many farm accidents down there. There's probably some of our worst accidents down in Mechanic Township with the Amish population down there. We have many farming accidents down there. And a trauma's the same way. We have, for trauma, we have an hour. They want you, from the time the injury happened, the trauma happened, they want you in a trauma center within an hour. So, this is what we're, this money is, would be going to, is to provide more personnel for this community, to better protect this community and serve it better. You know, one of my jobs as fire chief is to provide this community with the best fire EMS service. And that's what I think we're lacking right now, and I want to provide a better service. The other thing is our capital expenses, just like everybody else, have gone sky high. Anything for fire EMS, in the last two to three years, everything has gone up forty to fifty percent minimum. Everything is ridiculous anymore. We bought a new truck in 2019, inspected and purchased in 2019, received it in 2021. And if I were to send truck now, it'd be two hundred fifty or three hundred thousand dollars to one. So, that's the two main things that this levy will address. The main thing is, we need more personnel. We don't have anybody applying right now, part-time wise, nobody volunteered. And the thing you have to realize too, we do have a few that have joined the department. But you coming off the street with no training or nothing, it's gonna be two to three years before we can put you on shift and actually be able to use you. That's how long the time it takes to get your training. So, that's pretty much what this levy is gonna be for. I keep on going. I'd love for you to come down to the station, we'll go around, and I'll tell you what everything costs. I think that's what a lot of people don't realize how much our things cost. I'll just give another example, our heart monitors on our squads, we use them on every call. I got, we have three squads, two down here, one at the station at Lake Buckhorn. Have three heart monitors on that squad, we need them for every call. In 2010, I was able to get them through the AFG grant, and at that time, they were twenty-eight thousand dollars apiece. Right now, our maintenance guy from Physio Control came in the first of this year to do annual maintenance on them, and he said to all our monitors are obsolete. He said they're still will work, but if we need to parts in the next year or two, might be hard to get them. So, I had him give me a quote, those monitors are forty-eight thousand dollars apiece now. So, that's just a couple items that, you know, everything's like that. And we have, like I said, we have a problem. I'm trying to do something to solve the problem, and this is our solution. Anybody have any questions?
I do. I have three pages worth, I probably won't go through all of them, but I have three pages.
Come down and stay out, I'm there every day.
No, I want, there's a few I want to ask. I'm not speaking as my position here for the village, I'm speaking as a taxpayer, just for the record. And I want you to know I appreciate what all of you do for firing EMS. I was taught at a very young age to support fire EMS in schools, and I always have. And I'm not saying I won't, but you need to convince me otherwise right now. Your proposed four mil, I just saw in an article this morning on the Daily Record, which I had never seen that amount before. The four mil is supposedly gonna bring in one point four million?
Oh, so one point one.
Or, I'm sorry, one point one.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking at the four, one point one hundred and forty-three thousand. Your prior one and a half mil that you have currently on, is that a continuing or is that a renewal?
That is not.
That's a renewal?
That's a renewal.
And when is that out?
Two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, and that brings in three hundred and fifty thousand. What do the other two, two mil ones bring in? That's not listed anywhere.
The one brings in four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, the other is four hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Thank you.
So, we're, all three of those, we're working with one point two million dollars. Three quarters of that is going to full-time staffing. Our full personnel last year was nine hundred thousand dollars. That's to staff that station down here, just personnel. And then we have the capital.
I realize what personnel does, it's a good portion of your budget, I know that. So, in 2015, when you had that other levy passed, your documents say that you hired six full-time? Two on each shift?
We hired five full-time. I was already full-time.
It says six, but, okay, that's fine. So, you're proposing six, possibly six more with this new money, if it's passed? Okay. Two on each shift, correct?
Two on each shift.
Okay. How many people of your staff would be at Station Two? What hours and what, and how many?
Well, the minimum, we'd have two down there.
Okay.
And like I said, it'd probably be, we'd start out just like we did down here, do daytime staffing. And then go on from that, hopefully, to get twenty-four hour staffing down there too.
Okay. So, you would have twelve full-time, correct? You had six and adding six, so you would have ten out here and two down there, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Based on the hours.
But they're all different shifts, you know, they're only for every three days.
Right, I get that. What percentage of this new money do you think you're gonna be using for personnel? And how much for? A dollar amount or a percentage out of the one point one?
It's pretty much one full-time employee. You can always, one full-time employee is usually a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand for one.
With benefits and everything.
So, you're looking three, seven hundred and fifty, something like that. Of that money will be going for evening full-time personnel.
Okay. And on your, one of your fact sheets here, you have six full-time, twenty-four part-time. You also have two full-time administration.
Correct.
Is that yourself and the assistant?
That's myself and the assistant chief.
Okay. Do you work shifts, or are you just there during the day?
I'm there Monday through Friday. Saturday through three, Brian, the assistant chief. Well, he has been, he used to be on shift, and when we started having this problem of not being able to fill shifts, he works days where we're short. So, tried to fill those days. Most of the time, he's the third guy, or there's times where he's the fourth guy.
But you both do go out on calls if?
If needed, yes.
Okay. Do you have any idea what your estimated annual revenue is, like for 2022, so to speak?
Well, it'd be around, like, one point five, something like that, probably.
Okay. Combination of your levies and donations, EMS billings?
Our levies are one point two. The EMS billings are reflexes, you know, depends on how many calls you have. It's anywhere from two hundred to three hundred thousand.
Okay. When you, and I think it's great that you do all this community outreach, is there a cost associated with that?
There is none.
Other than your time?
It's all our community.
Right.
I'm not gonna charge somebody.
No, 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 I'm saying is, what's the cost to you? Like, your employees go, do, there is a cost there, right?
Yeah, it'd be just like today. The last week and this week, next week, we're doing, I'm doing fire prevention every day. And it's pretty much, it's, today, some of the guys on shift, gals on shift, went with me up here to the elementary. We did fire prevention all day long.
Okay.
So, it's pretty much, they're getting paid the same way as what they would if they were at the station.
Okay. I saw in the minutes, one set of minutes, where right after you guys had talked about putting this four mil on that you purchased a squad?
It's, we did.
You didn't?
We did.
Yeah.
It's purchased, it's not purchased, but it's ordered.
Right.
That is another thing, because everything is... When we first started specing the squad, they told me four hundred days for bill time. When I ordered it, it is now two-year bill time. So, I just, we just went ahead and ordered it so that we don't have to wait even longer. It's like any vehicle, it's hard to give them.
And one of, I think in that one set of minutes too, when I referred to that, you were gonna pay for it upfront, is that correct?
No, it would get, we paid for it when we gave the truck.
Okay, because I think the one set of minutes said something about.
Well, that was brought up, you know, if we paid for it, we'd have to give it a discount.
I'm not gonna bring that up. If this levy does not pass, what is your situation gonna be? Will you be able to maintain with the staffing you have right now?
Well, I can't, I can't tell you that for sure. I don't know what next year brings.
But if you, if your staff all stayed?
Yes.
You can function?
Yeah, but not the way we told you we would in 2015. If you're good with two people down here, because we get lots of back-to-back squad calls, your house catches on fire, two people show up. That puts us at risk and even you.
Sure, I understand. So, nothing would be cut if the levy failed? You're not?
Right now.
You're not financially at that, that point where you have to cut anything?
Not right now, no. It's just, we want to provide the best for this community.
Sure, and I appreciate that. At the June ninth meeting of your board, there was a brief comment in the minutes that discussed a meeting with Dave Hall purchasing a safety trailer and a training building.
It's not us purchasing. That is, we were, met with Dave Hall, because I guess he has, he has lots of leads for grants.
Sure.
This Appalachian Grant, that is one thing that we went to that meeting. We're trying to get those through, we can through the grant, the Appalachian Grant, where Dave Hall has other leads too that he's trying to look into.
I just wanted to clarify that, because the minutes did say purchase a training building. I also noticed in the minutes of July fourteenth, there was an increase in runs in Killbuck.
That was this year?
July fourteenth. Are we doing runs in Killbuck?
We do some mutually calls to Killbuck. They have daytime staffing, they're just like any other volunteer department in this county. Everybody has problems, it's like we have here.
Right.
They can't get volunteers.
How often does that happen?
Um, do you have the?
Killbuck Township for this year, we've been there thirty times. Now, that could be fire calls, which are mutually, like, we share back and forth, everybody does, and EMS calls.
So, some of those are just because they don't have any personnel available?
They may not have a full crew, or they may have one, and they just have a chief.
Are you reimbursed for any of that?
Not unless we transport them.
So, you get the transport fee?
Yeah.
Again, one of the minutes referred to someone going to the townships and talking about subgrinning their ARCA funds. Was that ever pursued?
Yes.
The American Rescue Plan?
Yes.
Did any of the townships?
No.
Okay, I was just curious. Okay. From a personal standpoint, if this levy passes, my taxes will increase a hundred and ninety-seven dollars. It's a little more than double of what it is right now. With the new evaluations coming out, we're not sure what those are gonna be. So, me personally, with close to two hundred dollars additional, I don't know, am I gonna be looking at three or five hundred more from the county? Was there any thought given to how this is gonna affect some people?
Yes.
That they cannot, they cannot pay, they're living payday to payday.
I know, but there was thought given to that. We talked about it, but we still thought we had to do something to fix our problem.
A two mil?
You know, we talked about that too, but then, you know, 2015, we had a two mil. Was it seven years later, we're asking for more? It's like putting a band-aid on it, you know? I don't want to come back in five to six years again and ask for more. I'd rather just ask for four mils and get what, the personnel that we can with this, and hopefully not have to ask for money for ten, twelve years.
The levy that you said is a renewal, that, I believe you said twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Are you gonna go for a renewal on that too? Or are you gonna let it drop?
Well, that was talked about, well, I'm not sure. We're, we're probably just gonna, we're probably gonna renew it. I guess we're gonna have to see once, where we stand if this levy passes, where we're at. But we pretty much need, personnel-wise, you know, all the money, all the money we can get to help keep these people. As you've seen in your letter too, going, I wanted to bring up too, in the last ten years or so, we've lost so many paramedics, full-time and part-time, because of our wages. You can go twenty miles up the road, anywhere in Wayne County, and you can make, start out ten to thirty thousand or more than what we pay. So, a lot of people.
I get that, we're dealing with issues here too, I get that.
Yes, so that's one of the things, I want to try to at least be competitive with the smaller ones, and hopefully be able to retain these paramedics so they don't just keep walking away.
Right. Also, being realistic, you can't pay what a Cleveland city does or a Columbus city does.
No, it's not even that far.
No, but I'm saying, those are probably even higher yet, you know?
We gotta be able to compete with everybody. We can at least compete with the departments our size, we'll hopefully be able to at least retain a little better.
I agree. I just have one comment, it's not really a question, but an article I read that popped up in my online Daily Record this morning, I was a little disappointed, there was one of your board members who was also an elected public official. The news article caption was, "Do it and be done with it." And apparently, this individual in the, in the article said that they were gonna go for the four mils, just do it and be done with it, so we don't have to come back in three to five years. And said that this is basically an insurance policy. I was very disappointed in that. To me, it sounded rather arrogant and assuming.
I don't even remember that ever being said.
I don't know that it was said, I'm telling you what was read, what I read in the, in an article this morning. So, with that said, thank you for your time, and thank you for your service, I appreciate all of you. I have used you before personally, so, and I appreciate it.
Okay, excuse me, you finished Karen?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we pay for the training of the paramedics?
Yes.
How many?
Not all of them that we've had, but we do pay for paramedic school.
Do you have any kind of a commitment from them for so many years?
There's usually, there's a contract we have, it's three years. You know, they'll work for us part-time for three years. A lot of the times, they, right now, you can pretty much walk into any part-time fire department and get a full-time job. And they'll come, do, work for us as much as they can, then three years. And then, someone will stick around, and then, soon as, you know, boyfriends, girlfriends come around, then you start losing them, especially when they get married and have kids, then they're pretty much gone. That's why I'm trying, this here is trying to keep them people here.
Why don't we get a full-time commitment, they have to work full-time?
Because we cannot give them those full-time hours. There's a, a part-time employee can only work fourteen hundred ninety-nine hours a year, or we have to start giving, or offering insurance and benefits.
Okay, since I'm not familiar with training, like the police academy, why does it take so long to get training for a paramedic?
Paramedic classes in itself is a year, minimum. There's only a couple back in general, and a couple others that are still a year. A lot of these paramedic classes are going to an associate's degree, that's two years right there. Then your fire school, we send them to firefighter one, that's four to five months. So, they'll become a firefighter. You can go on fires, then you have to wait until an EMT class comes up. That could be next year. So, that's a year there that you, the EMT class is another five months or so. There's a year, and if you go medic school, there's another year, so that's two years. It could be two, two and a half, three years before you have all your training.
Okay, thank you.
And the cost for training?
What's that?
The cost for training?
Uh, I mean, no, paramedic school is six thousand dollars. The, I have to help you out here, fire, fire school is what, fifteen hundred for level one? Then there's level two, and to be full-time, you have to have a level two and be a paramedic. I think the fire classes are fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars apiece. EMT classes, I think the same ones, pretty close to that too.
Kyle, I might be the only one in the room, but I never received a letter.
I didn't either.
I haven't either.
I've never received one.
We had the letter go to the post office, and then we were told that some of the people got it, and then the post office for some reason sent some of them to camp. So, if you did not get a letter, I have letters that I can give to you. You know, so that's something, you know, I'm accused of, we're trying to hide this, we aren't hiding anything.
This was the same one that was on your website?
Correct.
Okay, because I printed it out.
It's on our website, it's on our Facebook page.
Okay, I'll just go on the website.
We're not hiding anything, you know? That's why I'm here today.
Any questions?
Sure.
I have a question to ask Andy Kelly.
Yeah.
Uh, number one, so you addressed that, the Amish and the farming accidents. Are there, have there become more?
I'm not gonna.
I mean, how's they can handle all these other, I mean, all these years, and there's been farming accidents, all of a sudden, are there more?
No, there's not more.
Are there more fires in Lake Buckhorn?
There's more farming accidents down there, because that's our farming community.
More than it's?
No, it's not more. It's just, there's farming accidents down there, because that is our Amish population, they farm down there.
But they've always been.
I know.
Okay.
And the community down there is growing too. Our call value has gone up in Mechanic Township.
Okay. My other question is, you know, Holmes County counts themselves a volunteer community. How do you try to recruit the volunteers? How do you recruit them? How do you get people that like veterans or retired, how do you try to recruit the volunteers?
I go to, we put on our Facebook, volunteers, part-time, we put on our Facebook pages, we're taking applications for part-time, that's volunteer too. And five years ago, we used to get flooded with applications. We put on our, on our Facebook page this year, we had three applicants. I go to the high school, try to get these high school kids. Mr. Dodd has a first aid class out there, and he is helping me too. He's trying to help us recruit, you know, some of these high school juniors, seniors, whatever. I went out there last year for, he always has to come in at the end of each semester to, for his first aid class, show them what we do, and I try, after I'm done with the talk, I always try to bring up our cadet program. Our cadet program is, you can be thirteen years old, up till you graduate, you can come to our station, where they do trainings, they can go on, some of them can go on calls. But I try to get that out there, Mr. Dodd tries to get it out there. And I even had a talk with a couple young guys, gals, like, ask them what they're doing after school, because they were seniors. The one kid told me, I don't know. I said, how about trying us? You know, come to the station, you can ride with me for a day, see what we do. And he told me, well, I was thinking of going into the grill fields. I told him, well, just try. I told him, "Well, just try. Come to the station, um, talk to him a little more." I still haven't seen him. And the, uh, governor of Ohio put a task force together. And they were up the Wayne County Training Facility earlier this summer. They're trying to figure out, uh, the governor was trying to figure out how to recruit and retain volunteers. What can we do? And the fire marshal himself was there, and he said that the children in high school right now, you might as well just give up, cause they have no, they don't want anything to do with fire or police. The ones we have to try to recruit are the young ones. So I, we're, we're doing everything we can to try to recruit anybody. You know, we have applications on our website, but we don't have a line from, at our station of people knocking on our door with an application.
So I would like, I would like you to clarify something, based on our military record, based on the elected officials.
Well, I wish I would've seen the sorry block.
Let me read it to you?
Probably later.
So the, this is basically an insurance policy that protects you, your family, and your property. If you have an emergency, we can dispatch and be there in a matter of minutes. It can be life-saving. Don't we already have that? Isn't somebody already gonna be dispatched in a matter of minutes and it's gonna save lives? That's very upsetting. Because I'm, I'm just gonna say this. I pray that years ago, when levies were asked to be voted on for the income tax here in the village, people got scared. And when it didn't pass the first time, and it didn't pass the second time, we were scared. We were told lights would, streetlights would be turned off. We got a five-dollar license plate, then put on light, then forever. So, you know, I guess when the person says, "This is it," um, if it's, if it's just, "This is it," then do we need it? And it's, either way, it's bad.
All right, it's all right now. You call it what you want, we're gonna try, but we will be there.
And that's the thing, because what, when I came to talk, we're not saying that. You have to dispel to the community, that if this thing fails, their house, you will still come to their house and put their fires out.
Was I? When was that ever brought up, that we would not respond?
This is basically an insurance policy that protects you.
That's not saying we wouldn't respond.
If you have an emergency need, we can dispatch and be there in a matter of minutes. Isn't that already helpful?
Yes, it is. But this is gonna, this is helping so that, you know, we're gonna have, like I said, this year, we've had just two people on shift. There's been days where there's only been two people. So if those two people go on a call-
You don't get reciprocal from Kilbuck and from, if there's a fire, your other team members aren't gonna come.
Like you heard tonight, how many times we helped Kilbuck out. They have daytime staff.
I remember when the house across the street from me called a fire, you had a-
Yeah, that's a fire. They will, we have mutually comes in on fire. So if we need to, we will get mutually, you know, coming to help on an EMS call.
There are some people who are afraid that this levy doesn't pass, that their house, that, that they're timely, that it's- Well, then you should dispel that. You should say-
There's all kinds of rumors out there.
That same thing right now, that if this levy doesn't pass, and my house catches on fire, it's the same time that it would be to get to my house, and it wouldn't get if the levy didn't pass. You assure me of that.
I'm not gonna assure you of that. I can't guarantee, I can't look into the future and say, you know, if I have two people at the station, cause the levy didn't pass, I'm gonna have two people at the station, and those two, two people are out on EMS call, your house catches on fire, it's gonna take time for other people to get to the station. This is what we're trying to do, is so that doesn't happen.
Hey Chief, um, have there been other, other fire departments in Holmes County, are they struggling with the same issues as you are?
Yep. They're, you know, Western Holmes had, they put a levy on last year, I think it was last year, to get, they have full-time staffing now too. Uh, they have daytime staffing right now. Kilbuck put a levy on to, uh, for staffing. They have daytime staffing too. Right now, uh, East Holmes is the one, they have volunteers. You know, they can, they're able to somehow get people to apply. But seems like from there west, south, north, everybody has the same problem.
Do, do you know how they're doing that? Do you know how they're recruiting volunteers out east?
Yeah. I don't know. I think it's just, you know, they have the Amish community, and they're more to volunteer than, I guess, maybe that's what, I don't know for sure.
How many levies the other departments have out?
I don't know.
Do you know? Just curious.
Does anybody else have any questions or? I did wanna throw out that coming to the meeting tonight, I heard on the radio, I didn't get the dates or times, but there's a free webinar coming up. And also, there's gonna be a meeting at the Baker Building at the Fairgrounds in regards to the Appalachian Funds. So I'm sure it'd be very educational to find out, you know, possibly what would be available.
Yeah, I know there was already one out there.
I was at the one. It was a, um-
First one.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Tomorrow's the webinar.
Tomorrow? It's a free webinar, so anybody can get on it.
Anybody else have any questions? You know, I'd love to just not have this levy if we had people that would flood into our station and want an application. You know, I'd take thirty volunteers right now. They live around here. I always, you know, wanna put it out there, we're, you know, we have applications. We always hear the excuses, "I'm too old, I couldn't handle the side of blood, I couldn't run into a burning building." So why not support the people that can? That can't handle the blood, that would come out and run into your burning building. You know? Anybody else have any questions? That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you Kyle. Thank you Brian.
Okay, um, the previous meetings from October tenth, do we have a, to spend, a motion to suspend the reading?
I'll make a motion, Khan.
I'll second that.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Okay, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the last meeting? Not take a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Hafi?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Uh, resolution twenty-two-two dash twenty-four, the bills. Is there any questions, corrections to the bills?
I, I have a question about the fish tests. What's that? Do we have fish?
We, every year, we're required, as part of our permit, ETA permit, discharge permit for the sewer plant. It's basically a fish kill test. We take samples upstream and downstream of the sewer plant, send those to the lab. They introduce those into, uh, there's a specific species of minnow into tanks, but then see how many die.
Oh.
And we get to pay for it. It's not cheap.
It's like, fish test, okay, nevermind. That's new to me.
It's another measure of the oxygen demand or depletion. There's other ways to test that, but they're required to do.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, do sorry. No, go ahead.
Well, it's a production. Every year, we gotta buy ice and it's frustrating.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll second that.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Reports of officers, chief?
I just have something for executive session personnel.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Yeah, cause I was explaining that, I was thinking, there's times I wish I could say I'm making this up, but I'm- Over the years, there's been a lot of those. I wish I could say I'm making this up, but I'm not. Uh, okay, design review board will meet next Wednesday for a certificate of appropriateness application for a sign at one thirty-eight West Jackson, that's right next door, for suites. They've redone the building. Uh, there's gonna be short-term rental Airbnb-type suites up, upstairs, right next to us here. Resurfacing project, at this point, we're just waiting on the subcontractor to come in and finish out the striping, stop bars, crosswalks, parking tees, and then the manhole adjustments. There's five manholes. They're gonna be coring out and re-gra, resetting that grade, get those done. The ODOT TAP project, I do have a little bit of an update. I got some more, uh, legislation that we'll have to pass from ODOT today, and an agreement. Now that, at this, we're at the final tracings portion of the project, the next step will be to actually commit, which we're thousands and thousands of dollars into, so we better commit at this point. So I'll be presenting that to you for the next meeting. The ARPA project, the North Grant Storm Sewer, we just met this afternoon with the engineers, running into, well, just, not to be a broken record, but costs and everything else is going up. We're, we're gonna be looking at a phased project. There's no way we can complete from the outfall at Perkins, all the way to the creek, with the money we have available. We're gonna start at the creek, work back, so we aren't creating bottleneck. I don't know exactly where that'll land yet. We're, that's what we're reviewing. But the, the drainage area for the, if you remember the, the box culvert we did on Matt Anthony, that channel collects over, was right around a hundred and ten acres of runoff. All comes to that point. And you have to think how much of that's developed that wasn't developed thirty years ago. So the infrastructure isn't necessarily failing, it's just drastically undersized. Combined with some failures, of course, but that's what we're up against, so we're just gonna start where we can, keep chipping away at it. Talking about fifty-four inch pipe at this point, to be able to handle that. In twelve-foot alleys, that's, it's gonna be a challenging project.
Nate, does the lay of the land lend itself to any, like, creating additional storm sewers? Or is it best to still let it go through this one and just make it bigger?
One of the options we looked at, if we were interested in acquiring three or four of the properties in that block, tear them down and create a swell. That would be one way to handle it. The natural contour goes right through those houses.
That's expensive.
And I have no interest in-
No.
-acquiring homes and moving people. I, I don't, I mean, that's gonna be very expensive and unpopular.
Yeah.
It's, no, so, roundabout way now-
Okay.
To, the water's gonna go where it's gonna go. You can force it somewhat, but every bend you put in it is another failure point.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Job security, put it that way. There's, there's gonna be no shortage of, of work for the next many years. Uh, nothing really on the demolition projects, the two houses on two forty-one. We're just waiting on the county to get that rolling. We're ready to go. Um, just need to get them in and out. Uh, applications are coming in very slowly. We have a couple candidates we're looking at for the street and utility department vacancies. Hopefully have something to you here in the next month or so. Leaf collection, we're gonna be, we're unofficially beginning this week. There'll be some trial runs as we get the equipment out. And I mean, it's out. We just need to put everything together and do a couple test runs. We will collect bagged leaves this week as well. We're seeing a lot of bags out along the curb. Uh, but full, the full schedule will start next week, and it'll be the same as it's been every year. So I'll get that posted tomorrow, so everybody knows when their pickup dates are. Just wanted to update you on the design review guidelines. You remember when Ruth Waltman came in? Uh, we've, she, she put a small committee together. Uh, it's Brent, Hofstadter, myself, Brittany Jackson, Jackpot Pottery, and Mike McDowell. We're going through the, the documents, updating, making sure they jive with each other. There, we've found more and more instances of contradicting statements, so we wanna make sure everything's cohesive. The next step, once we have a good draft of that, it'll be, it'll go to the design review board, and then to you guys as well for your ultimate approval. You know, it'll have to be an ordinance change. Wanted to follow up, see if there's any more thought on the artificial turf for the amphitheater?
I'll put my two cents in. I went down there and looked, uh, the other day. It's quite impressive, I must admit. But how about concrete? Does it be cheaper?
Uh, I think it would be. I wanted to-
Look at that.
Tom asked me about that tonight. I hadn't, hadn't considered that at this point. I'd be willing to get a quote on that. That might be the best option. People can bring blankets or chairs to sit on.
Let's get a quote on that thing.
Okay.
Get it painted or tinted green.
If you do the right broom finishing, it'll look like grass too.
Plus, I just think lawn chairs on a, on artificial turf would be just destructive.
I agree.
Yeah, I think there's, there'd be some concern there. Over time, you're gonna wear those spots out while your legs are sitting all the time.
I don't know if Andrea or, um, Adam have been down there to see that? This girl, I mean, high school kid, unbelievable, what she's done. It is unbelievable.
I've been a little tied up.
What'd you do? Make your wife mad?
No, it's a twenty-five-year project. I can get my heart rebuilt.
Oh my gosh, wow.
Uh, next item I have, Karen did, did some housekeeping. We discovered there's some terms that need renewed for the design review board and planning and zoning board. I, I just hadn't kept up on who was expired and who wasn't, so. Uh, Brett Gallion, John Swolinski, their terms, they have two-year terms, expire January of this year. My bad. So their, their new term would expire the January of twenty-four. Planning and zoning, Dave Schrock, six-year term would expire February ninth of twenty-eight. Dave Kreider, four-year, two-nine-twenty-six. Michael, three-year, January two of twenty-five.
I would be open to applications to see if other people in the village are interested in serving.
Well, we have a couple openings coming up, I know, on the design review board. I know two, two members not on this list that are gonna be leaving, so absolutely.
I would be, I would be open to new, new people.
Are the people that are listed under DRB and P and Z, do they wanna continue?
Yeah, they've been showing up, so I'm, we have a hard time filling these boards, so I'm not real inclined to-
We had a whole bunch of applications for the design review board last time. We had like five.
Oh, we did. You're right. Yes, you're right.
So I, I feel like there are people out there that would like to serve, and maybe we should give them an opportunity.
Absolutely. Send them in.
Come on in.
We're gonna have two-
Come on in.
Two more openings, like I said. We, do you wanna act on these terms or not?
I don't.
Yeah.
So then we're gonna have-
Cause it looks like we don't do something with these terms now. You don't have a, you don't have a committee.
Right.
Well, it's October. This is January. Could we not put it out there for thirty days?
It was last January.
Yeah, they, they expired.
It says twenty-four.
That's when the new one, this current one expired.
Oh, it should've been twenty-one.
Yeah.
Oh, so they're well over.
They're over now. If we didn't act on these, we'd have like seven vacancies, which we can't meet. We could do no business.
I'd make a motion, we move forward with these, since we're gonna have other openings coming up.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafi?
No.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Last thing I have, uh, sorry, I failed to put it on here, just to follow up on the debt service capital improvement discussion. Is there any, should've all got that spreadsheet I sent out a couple weeks ago. Karen sent some information to Bob and I last week, I believe. Regardless of what you do, as we discussed a couple of times, we, we will need legislation, and we'll get that prepared to eliminate the debt service.
Yeah, for next week, we need more legislation.
Because obviously, that needs, is gone. To go away.
Yeah.
In fact, Mary just gave me new numbers today. I talked to her last week, and she just gave me another receipt today. And we currently, at this moment, have enough to pay the loan off.
That's perfect.
And there's still bills coming in, or payments coming in, so.
That's great.
Once that's done, we can't close the debt service fund out until twenty twenty-five, because I've got to still make those semi-annual payments. But once it's closed out, then the money that's left in there, there's not gonna be any new money put in it. So we're estimating, there's probably gonna be about eighteen thousand left in there. So once the debt service is completely paid off by us, then we'll transfer legislation. But there'll be, that eighteen thousand can go to, back to the sewer fund, or the RNI fund, whichever you choose to do.
That's good.
You finished that?
Was there any, anything else you wanted to see on going forward, or questions, thoughts?
Should we not put out that we're taking applications for the Design Review Board? I mean, should we put out that we're doing that?
Yeah, would, sure.
January fourth of this coming year.
But it's not those two.
Oh, oh, it's the, it's two other ones. Well, then we should get, get that rolling, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you, does a final decision need to be made on what we're doing tonight, or?
No, I was just asking, is there anything else you wanna see? More numbers, less numbers, more information?
I was trying to, I was trying to figure out with, with the lists that we had been given, you know, what needs done now, what needs done five years, what needs done ten years. But in those interim years, you know, how, how much spread out would the, would those costs be? Because it looks like what needs done right now is over three hundred thousand dollars. And, and then we have a five-year mark, but could we not spread that out from year one to year four?
Ideally, yes.
So ideally, the, the hundred fifty thousand, the twenty dollars would work if we spread it out like that, right? Is, is that what I'm understanding?
In prac- in theory, yeah.
In theory.
Yeah, I mean, the, the frustrating part, like anything else, is those, those costs and those timeframes are assumptions on our part. Things can drastically change overnight. And I, ideally, that's gonna be throughout our long, but can't guarantee that. I, I think, I think the most important thing, if we're gonna do this, let's start it somewhere, and start chipping away at those things, so we can be further ahead than we've been for a long time.
Yeah. And while I, while I understand that, everybody's excited that the forty-five dollars is actually going away. But now we're looking at increase in our, our property taxes. We're looking at increase in fire taxes. We're looking at increase in groceries and gas and everything else. And I feel like, well, here at the village, we're just gonna keep that forty-five dollars right in there, and I just think that's wrong.
But, yeah, I, I completely understand that, because I, we're all in the same boat.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of that.
Well, I think you guys all kind of, without legislation, you've all decided that that forty-five needs to go away.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we've decided that, yeah. But should we tack on forty-five dollars?
I personally don't think so.
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't think so, either. I think it'd be, I
I mean, if you feel you need to put something on there, that's your decision, but I think you need to give back to the residents.
Yeah, I agree. It's their money.
I was thinking most fifty percent of it, to go back in fifty percent for capital improvement at most, which would be twenty-two fifty a quarter. Which would put us sort of between the one fifty-seven and the one ninety-two, and based on the expenditures that we're looking at doing.
Because I think it's important for the residents to realize that we don't really have anything extra at this point. You know, that to continue and just let the forty-five drop off without doing anything, and something happens, we're in trouble. Uh, that we're going to have to try and, you know, borrow money or do whatever. I mean, adding something back on, I, I certainly don't want the forty-five, but I think the half or the twenty-five or whatever, something middle of the road is, is going to at least give us, start a reserve that we can have when something goes wrong, because it will.
And it'll be a capital improvement fund, not an operating fund.
Right.
Those things that we know we need to fix.
Yeah.
Are there, are there other funds that are unhealthy that we could be looking at?
It can only be used for enterprise funds.
Say it again.
It can only be used for enterprise funds, which is water sewer. That's, one of those water bills, that's all it can be used for, is those two. Well, we do have a storm sewer charge on there, which has been on there for years. It's just broken out now. But that goes to the general fund, because that's where storm sewers are. That's been there for years. It's just broken out now, so.
Two bucks a quarter.
Yeah.
Is there a consensus on the reduction amount? Can that be decided today, or are we gonna wait?
Devon, what do you think?
About removing the forty-five dollars, yes.
Oh, about how much? No, about the, the cost that should be added?
I agree with what Tom said, twenty, twenty-five, whatever, yeah.
Have to be twenty-two fifty a quarter.
Twenty-two fifty?
I mean, I was, yeah, back and forth on twenty, twenty-five.
We'll have you come run to the bank for us for change every day.
Well, the bills are never in equal amount anyhow.
Yeah, they're never, yeah.
We never round them to
Well, keep in mind, whatever you're gonna do, at a, whatever amount, twenty, thirty, twenty-two fifty, you're gonna also need to decide, are you putting all that in the sewer RNI, or all that in the water RNI? Are you splitting that twenty-two fifty between the water and the sewer?
Isn't there already
It's not just as simple as, because you have water projects, you have sewer projects, so.
Isn't there already a breakdown between what goes into capital improvement of water and sewer normally? With some of their capital improvement funds? Where does that money, I mean, that money has to come from somewhere.
The RNI fund?
Into the RNI fund, yes.
That's tap fees.
Yeah.
That's nothing with the water and sewer bill.
But I mean, what's the percentage of the tap fees, or the
Percentage of what?
You're talking between the water, how much of it's water, how much of it is sewer? Okay.
I don't write the permits, so I don't. They take care of all that.
Yeah, so like sixty, forty, and then that, you know? I think the other thing we need to, can do is look at our projects, too, and see what
Yeah, I was gonna say, as a
Yeah, what percentage of money goes to each one, yeah, or is needed by each one, yeah.
Kind of not, I don't know. I'm, my thinking is not looking so much at the tap fees percentage, is what projects are out there.
Right.
And then decide, do you want fifty percent of that going to water, fifty percent to sewer?
Well, and
Well, or do we wanna focus on, I mean, can we change it? Could, like
You'd have to be done by ordinance, and then you got the billing.
Yeah, so that would be just a mess. Yeah, no, we don't wanna do that. We don't wanna do that.
So, I mean, if we had all went to water for the Worcester Road project, water?
Well, you could, yes, but then if you, once that project's done, then you're gonna have to do new legislation if you want that money to go to a sewer, and you're also gonna have to change the utility program.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to be constantly changed.
So we might as well just divide it out and be done with it.
I still, how, when do we have to make a determination? We got like two, three months yet?
The next bills go out the end of December. Unless you wanna wait until, that, those bills, we do January twenty-fifth, or January, yeah, twenty-fifth. Unless you wanna wait until the bills that are due in April.
I just wanna research.
I agree with the twenty-two fifty.
I just wanna research and see what could be available.
And then come up with a plan for
You know, with a Appalachian funds, anything else.
With the divi- with the division.
Those, those are, yeah, probably, you're probably looking a year till you get it.
Six hundred thousand dollar project out there.
If we don't do anything, then you're not gonna have anybody going in there.
You know what I mean?
For, for the first, right.
It's a good idea.
That's, yeah.
And if we change it, five years, change it.
Then we change it, right.
When was it set to expire anyways? The forty-five dollars?
Um, the loan is paid off in twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so
But we have accumulated enough from that in that fund right now to, to pay it off. So we don't need to put any more money in there.
Karen, with the price of everything going up, are our tap fees high enough to cover our costs?
Our what?
Our tap fees.
I think so, because I just revisited that not too long ago.
Yeah, tap fees are pretty good shape.
The only thing they changed was the cost of a meter, wasn't it?
Meter horns.
Meter horns, yeah.
We had a flat rate, and we just made it mark, correct, mark, call. So like on the water tap, two hundred fifty dollars goes to the RNI. It's not a set, it's not a percentage, it's just a flat, flat rate. And I'm not finding the sewer one for some reason, but I, for some reason, I wanna say it's five hundred.
It's more than the one.
Is it? Yeah, I think we're
So it's double the water? You think the sewers double the water?
Of, of the tap fee goes to
That's why I was
Yeah.
So it would be sixty-six percent sewer, thirty-three percent water. What do you think?
No, well, well, I mean, you could.
I mean, but we were just talking, like, the Worcester Road project, how long is that gonna take us? A while. It's not like we're gonna, we would be changing legislation.
I mean, we're over six hundred thousand dollars on that at this point, so you're talking six years' worth of collection.
But we'll also have some grant funding for that, right?
I can look better.
We got the American recovery ponies, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got both tranches.
That were, uh, what is there, like, three, three, or two eighty left in that fund?
Yeah, because we've used some for engineering on it.
Two seventy, two eighty.
Yeah. About two eighty.
And we've got seventy-ish thousand from CDBG committed to the storm sewer. So that'll wipe that out in no time.
So do we all agree on that cost, or are we not doing that tonight?
If we set the cost tonight, then deal with it.
Figure out the percentage later.
You're gonna have to do legislation.
Yeah.
Pardon?
You have to do legislation to change it. And then in that legislation, it's gonna need to say how much is going to water RNI, how much is to sewer RNI, so that the billing can match it.
The legisla- legislation needs to be done by what date?
Uh, first meeting in December, because they're gonna do readings, probably the middle of December.
So they'd be suspending the reading?
You could have the first reading, and then suspend the second and third.
We'd have to pass at that meeting.
Well, we'd have two meetings in November.
Yeah.
And the first, and the third one in December. No, you could have all three readings.
You could have all three.
If we decided tonight.
Yeah. The only thing that has to be done is the debt service
Right.
at this point.
I mean, if you wanna take your time and look at numbers more, and shoot for the April billing,
Yeah.
April due date.
Yeah, we can just do the elimination of the debt service at the next meeting.
I would suggest doing that.
You wanna take your time deciding the rest of this, and just skip billing cycle.
As opposed to just saying twenty-two fifty, and then we don't know how much you want for water, how much you want for sewer. To me, that's
Yeah.
So
It's not a good way to do it.
So if we wait till April, the forty-five drops off immediately, and we would have one billing without anything.
Mm-hmm.
And then the next one, we'd add something back on.
Right.
Might be.
I, I'm not sure. I, I like that approach. I, I mean, it
Well, then you guys decide what you wanna do, and possibly only have one reading, suspend the second and third.
Can you have a spreadsheet of the capital improvements we're looking at doing for the next, get them to us, so we can figure out what percentage we wanna do. That's the only other thing we're waiting for, right?
We have that.
But, yeah.
He gave us that.
What?
But we don't have told, I told everything up to now.
Oh, yeah, I can do that, yeah.
Because it, it just seems like, once we know how, how the projects are split, that would determine how we are splitting the money that we're going to bring in accordingly.
Okay. Yep, I can do that.
And in that case, we have for the next meeting, I mean, we could do even two readings and suspend the third, or something like that. I mean, it
Okay.
Okay, we ready to move ahead? Karen?
Uh, I had a question about the, uh, manhole adjustments.
Yeah.
What kind of time do they take to do? I'm assuming they're on South Washington Street?
Yeah, South Washington and Maslin Road.
The one between the curves?
Yes, yeah.
By Terrace View.
Check, yeah. So, I don't know exactly how long each one takes. They, they core around it, pull it out, rebuild the risers, and then asphalt around it.
Means this is gonna be nighttime work, or?
It's not, spec, it's nighttime work. They have to maintain traffic. That's all part of the contract, but
What do they rebuild the risers with? I mean, is that concrete that?
Dirt, precast.
Okay.
Yeah, precast and steel.
Okay, so there's not any waiting time for concrete to cure anything, okay.
No.
Ten days.
I mean, I, I don't wanna paint them in a quarter, but I would guess four hours per manhole would be plenty.
Okay.
I would sure think.
Okay.
I was thinking a whole day for
No, no, I wouldn't think so.
It'd be terrible.
It's a pretty, pretty efficient system.
Okay, now move on. Okay, Karen?
Are you done, Nate?
I'm done, I believe, yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to let you know that the required annual transfers per previous ordinances between the water to the water RNI, sewer to sewer RNI, I completed those. Those do not take legislation, because they're enterprise funds. So you're just moving between those two funds. Um, the alt care medical insurance renewal, um, I received, actually, the day after the last council meeting. Um, and it came in at four percent, and then a week later, um, from our local reps, Sasha and Diane, I got a revised renewal, and it was two percent.
Oh, that's a miracle. That's a miracle.
Sign it quick.
Yeah, hurry up and get it back.
Well, that was my next thing. They haven't officially voted on the dental either. If you remember, that was one point one percent. So, um, they need to know soon whether we're gonna accept that or not, so.
Yeah, do you need a motion? I'll make a motion, accept that quickly. Both of those?
Both of those?
Yes, both. That's phenomenal.
Hafi?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
And I just wanted to let you know that I worked, started to work on the twenty twenty-three appropriation, so hopefully I'll have a draft, a good draft for you guys at next meeting on that, too. That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
You have anything? Okay. Uh, legislation, it's gonna be the first reading on Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the transfer of sums from the general fund to the street maintenance and repair fund to the cemetery operating to the cemetery operating fund, to the police disability and pension fund, and to the sidewalk replacement fund. Is there any questions? Any committee reports? Any old business? Old business I have is the handicap parking on the first block of Alexander Street. I've now, I've had four people contact me, that the person that the placard was set up hasn't had a car in two years. So, parking is such a premium in that area that they really want the handicap removed, so.
Nate, have you been able to touch base with, with the resident?
Back, when this first came up, I tried and tried, could never get anybody.
Is, is anyone else using that spot that has a handicap placard?
Not that I've seen, no. It's generally just an open spot, that, what I've noticed, at least during the day, I don't, you know, not sure what goes on all night.
So Nate, do you have any opposition to removing it?
That's two guys' call, I, obviously, if they want it, they'll, we'll find out if you'd remove it.
Brian Persberger didn't call anybody else?
He called me, he called me, I talked to him.
I think I, he was on the phone with me for an hour at least.
This isn't the first time that we've talked about this, so I feel like if they had an issue with it, that they probably would've come into council and said, hey, I need that spot.
Find out, do you need this or not, and I get nothing.
I guess her son totaled her car, and she's not gonna get another one, that's what they've said. I'll make a motion to do away with it.
Second.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Any new business? Okay, executive session, to consider the appointment, appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, the motion or compensation of a public employee or official. All right, everybody, have a good evening, thank you.
I'll make a motion to go.
Yeah, I need a motion, go ahead, okay.
Two seconds. Poland?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.